Committee for May 20, 2025. This meeting will take place at 5:00 PM in the City Council Chamber of Medford City Hall, 85 George B. Hasadrive. Today, we are covering item 25-069 offered by me, Chair Callahan. It is a resolution to invite the Friends of the Chevalier Theater to inform the community. Before I read this motion, can we just have a roll call for the --
Sure. President?
President.
Present. Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent, I believe, for military service. Counselor Scarpelli. Chair Callahan.
Present. Thank you. So to start us off, I will just read the resolution first. Whereas the Chevalier Theater is a historic, thriving cultural center used by our residents, which brings together people from all over greater Boston. Be it resolved that the City Council invite Cindy Watson from the Friends of the Chevalier to attend a Public Works and Facilities meeting to inform our community about the state of the Chevalier Theater. And I would love to invite Ms. Watson to come up to the podium and give us your -- give us your take on the state of the Chevalier. Sorry, let me just --
Hello?
There you go. You're on. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for inviting me to the meeting. And Anna did yeoman's efforts to make sure that this took place at 5:00 o'clock. So thank you for spearheading the meeting.
My pleasure.
The rate of the pack is determined by the speed of the leader. So thank you for being the leader. Before we go into what I want to talk about, I also want to thank some of the council members for coming to the Friends of Chevalier meeting. It was a standing room only, as well as those who have chosen to become members. So thank you. All right, I'm here representing the Friends, which is near and dear to my heart, but I'm also a commissioner. So this addresses two issues, okay? I work closely with Paul Donato, all right? As we know, I was shocked, I went to some people down at City Hall last week, they had no clue who Paul Donato was. You know that he's a state rep for Medford, all right? So he and I touch base often because every year he raises $100,000 for the Chevalier. Okay, so this year, you know, we talk often, he's the vice president of Friends of Chevalier. He indicated that he went before the House and Ways and Means Committee down at the State House to ask for $150,000 as opposed to $75,000. Well, they were very upset because there was no documentation from the previous year of the $100,000 that he gave us. Two years ago, we almost lost the money because we didn't spend it by June 30. Fortunately, we were able to spend the money at that time. So I told Paul that I would take care of it. I went down to City Hall, I had the opportunity and the pleasure, I had never met him, to meet with Bob Dickinson, the CFO. I asked him to tell me these are funds earmarked specifically for the Chevalier. He looked into, I went into his room, the computer. Right now, there's only $25,000 in the fund, all right? Today is May 20. Obviously, this money is running out. So I mentioned it at the commission meeting on Wednesday, okay? Now, there was a contentious battle somewhat between myself and Paul Riggi, who's the facilities director who oversees 18 facilities. That's a lot for one person. However, he also indicated that he's responsible for the fiscal aspect of the buildings, which why do we have a financial director? So the meeting ended at approximately, let's say 8:00, that's the 6:30. I just left Wednesday with $25,000 in the account as advised by Bob Dickinson. I had also emailed Brianna, the mayor, about this as well. Ironically, on Thursday morning, I wake up, 7:19, I get a message. Okay, here is the budget for the, all of a sudden, from Friday night till that morning. Increased emergency lighting, $14,000. Increased, excuse me, replaced antiquated emergency lighting, $18,922. Paint to the exterior doors to the theater, as well as the handrails in the fire escape, Replaced a non-functional handicap door opener at $8,850 and made other improvements for the accessibility to the theater at a rate of $36,579. Now, I don't believe these are accurate figures. That very next morning, Friday, I emailed Bob Dickinson because he told me that was the best way to address the situation. He gets, you know, various phone calls. I also called the mayor, all right? Because I don't want to present false information to anybody, all right? This money is earmarked for the Chevalier alone. Right now, I don't know if this council knows, we've just had our third lawsuit, okay? Now, I don't know if we're falling under the rules of indemnification or not. The woman sued because on the balcony, the lighting is very poor. So that's number one while I'm here, to ask for additional funds for the lighting in the balcony. I mean, this is ridiculous. So where do these funds come from? Where are the numbers? Can anybody explain it to me? This is within a 12-hour period.
Sorry, this is just, you've just been sort of rattling off some events that happened and I don't have the budget numbers right in front of me. I mean, I'm sure there is a budget for the Chevalier. Would you like us to follow up with the administration to figure out what the budget is and --
There should be $100,000 in there, Anna.
Sure, so it sounds like the $100,000, let me just ask, the $100,000 was that for this fiscal year so that that would be from last July 1 until ending in June 30?
Correct.
So that would mean that since we're three quarters of the way through that year, that maybe there would be $25,000 left?
That was all he had. That's what he told me.
Right, but it sounded, I mean, I, look, I wasn't at that conversation, though. I mean, I'm really just going off of what you said. It sounds like there are $25,000 remaining in the budget and there is a quarter of the year left to go. So that doesn't sound particularly odd. But again, I don't have, like, I was not, I did not realize, if you'd asked, I could have prepared and had the budget at this meeting, like, with all those numbers and knowing what everything had been spent out of that budget. I did not realize that that was what you were going to be asking about today, so --
Well, my main reason for coming here was to get additional lighting for the balcony so that we --
Great, and that was what I understood, that you had some requests of things that you wanted done, which, you know, we're happy to, you know, pass along, but I think if you want a deeper understanding of what's going on with the budget, like, we can do that, it just might take a little bit of time. I'm going to go to Counselor Lozaro. Oh, sorry. Your number five? How can I tell? Oh, he's requesting.
Thank you, yes. So one thing is, if you have a request for funding, we would have to go through the mayor's office. The mayor's office allocates the budget. We can only, as a council, approve or not the budget as it's presented to us from the mayor's office. So our meeting at 6:00 tonight is to hear from a variety of departments that are presenting their budgets that have been allocated by the mayor's finance office. So that would be Bob Dickinson and the mayor with input from those departments. Then they present them to us, we hear about why various things are changing, and then when we approve the budget in June, that's what we do. But we don't get to have very much input. We do send the mayor our suggestions earlier in the spring, but it is useful for us to hear about what the needs are. We could have, if we had done it slightly earlier, we could have presented the mayor with some requests, but they're not always met. I sent a variety of requests to the mayor earlier in the spring, they weren't all even close to met because there isn't that much money available in the budget. But if what you're saying is that it wasn't, it was available, but it wasn't spent, I think that's interesting.
That's what I'm understanding, he said, are you sure you are not, Bob?
So by the way, if I may, today at 6:00, we will have the Chevalier Theater budget on, so if you just stick around, then you will hear the presentation of the budget for the Chevalier Theater.
Then who is going to present that?
Good question. And by the way, also, I believe Paul Riggi is on Zoom and has raised his hand, so shall we go to him? Is that all right, if we go to him?
Fine.
First, right, thank you. Can you? We're asking you to unmute.
Thank you. I think I'm here.
Thank you.
There's several things I'd like to talk about. One, it came to our attention, Cindy had notified us that Representative Donato wanted an itemized detail of what we spent the money on. So the list that she just read is myself going through my records, and I keep everything for the Chevalier separate, and that's why I was able to produce that list so quickly. Number two is I have been working all fiscal year on the premise that we receive $100,000 earmark. So I was spending that money for the Chevalier Theater based on that earmark. Through conversations that we've been having, we are just double-checking with the state that the appropriation was properly transferred over to the city of Medford. that the appropriation was properly transferred over to the city of Medford. Bob Dickinson has reached out to the state comptroller's office to find out the exact date that the earmark was sent over and the exact amount that was sent over. So we're working on that behind the scenes, just to double check that the money that Representative Donato had earmarked for the Chevalier Theater was actually received by the city of Medford.
Okay, so as you said yourself, Paul, to quote you, we could possibly be $75,000 in the hole. Because I appreciate your efforts in trying to investigate where this money is. However, the commission is the one that really prompted me to come here. I volunteered, and that's how I got in touch with.
We, we wouldn't be in the hole because the state has guaranteed the city of Medford that money. So they just need to do the transfer. And that's what we're working on, to ensure that the transfer came over properly and is coded properly. It could actually be in the general account for the city and just needs to be transferred over to the special account for the Chevalier Theater. So that is something we're working on behind the scenes to ensure that it is done and completed properly.
Okay, well, at May 20, I would appreciate your efforts to get that money appropriated appropriately so that Paul Donato will be satisfied.
Well, we have, we have two issues, Cindy. First, we need to confirm that the state actually transferred it over. And if they did, then that's how we can actually check to ensure where that money is sitting in the city's treasury.
Well, that's what I have been asking.
Yes, and that, and we're working on that. But, and we're working, Bob did reach out to the comptroller. They've been having a conversation. So that we're getting closer to the resolution of that issue.
Okay, because Paul Donato has raised over $5 million for the Chevalier, okay? He's on the Friends with me, excuse me, Paul, let me finish. He's on the Friends with me. He and two others have been on the Friends for 30 years, since the inception of the Friends. He deserves to know, and he is our state rep. I'm coming here as a courtesy gesture. I think it's a little odd that it, May 20, a month away from the end of the year, we don't know. Now, I am happy for all of your efforts. And I'm grateful that at least this is being pursued. Because right now, the money's not there. Okay? Now, just as an example, as the Friends, okay? When we write up things, and I can just, okay, give you a snapshot. All right, we under, I can't take all credit for this at all. Ken Kraus is unbelievable. All right, we've, the Friends have raised $1.7 million, all right? It's not just for the Chevalier. It's also for the Medford Youth Center, okay, the YMCA. Just as an example, again, we have the documentation, which I think all parties involved should have and should know how the money is being spent. We raise the money. We don't get any state monies, very little at times. Or we have people do grant writing. Committed to crafting the city's application to the Mass Gaming Commission Casino Mitigation Fund, resulting in grants of $300,000 to convert the Chevalier's ceiling lighting to LED. It's spectacular. And to install digital billboards near the Frank entrances to the theater. All right? Obtained a 10-year, again, as I alluded to, grant, sustaining grant from the Cummings Foundation to expand a literacy program to the Medford Youth Center, building on the Center's program that has been going on for years. So at least we have the documentation. We do, you know, the financial reports. The commission unfortunately does not have a secretary, so things are now recorded. So we don't have these figures. All right? So I'm happy, particularly for you, Anna, that you will continue to look up into this. Because we don't need another lawsuit. Again, when we go, I'm not an attorney. The Chevalier is owned by the city of Medford. So who's going to be sued? Okay? All right, now, a second issue, and I don't know if you folks are, but something this is, you can handle. I live across the street from the Hegner Center. All right? Medford secured $850,000 in federal funding to transform the Hegner Center into a vulnerability preparedness site and climate recreation. The place looks like something out of The Addams Family. I have to call every year during the summer because kids will jump on the fence, going in there, doing various things. So does anybody have any idea as to when that will start? George? Anna? Adam?
Cindy, I can actually give you an update on the Hegner Center if you'd like.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We are working on that project. The city departments that want to use the center have actually provided a schematic design of the building. And I will be meeting with our outside house doctor to meet on site so they can come up with architectural drawings for the building, because that's the next step as part of our grant process to get the architectural drawings done. And once those are done, then the city can actually bid out on the construction for that Hegner Center. So there have been a lot of things going on in the background that will support actually putting a shovel in the ground and getting that turned over to what it is now reimagined and re-envisioned as.
Do you have any expectation of when this might start? Because that has been sitting there in that condition for years. Right now, they have old police cars in the parking lot.
If I may, the Hegner Center is actually not on the agenda, and I really am interested in understanding. I thought that you would be giving us the state of the Chevalier, and I know you specifically wanted to talk about the facility.
No, I just asked if this was something that was appropriate to bring up here. If not, I'll go to whoever receives the federal money. George, do you have any idea? No idea. Okay, so.
But I do have some through the chair. Representative Donato did call me about the funding. And he wanted to let us know, just an update, that they found $25,000. They reported to Bob Dickinson. And then there is $75,000 that they're, they'll be reaching out tomorrow to, to make sure that the city of Medford receives that $75,000. So we have that $100,000. He also is asked, he is also asking the state to follow back to all of the money that was required, was to be sent to Medford over the last five years. So he's doing even a deeper dive and hoping that if there was something that they missed, that the city missed, or the state missed, that we can recover and hopefully help us as we move forward. So I wanted to share that with you.
That'd be great, George. Thank you.
And I know that with the lighting situation, a quick question, if I can through the chair.
Please, yes.
Have we, has anyone on the, I know that you do lots, Cindy, I know your team does so much, but has anybody applied for community preservation money to help assist in funding?
Ken has in the past.
Okay, so.
So we got money elsewhere. This, Ken is going to be leaving a lot of things soon.
Yeah.
So this current year, my knowledge is that nobody applied for the CPA. Because we had money, like I said, the $300,000, we got money for mitigation. We get a dollar back from every single show that's done. So if there's two shows, okay, the maximum capacity's 1,900 times two, that's $3,800.
So I think what I would ask, if we could motion that we could ask the city administration to see if someone from the city can assist us in writing a proposal or a wish to CPA for any funding. Do they have a number for the lighting? Did they get a number by any chance? Mr. Riggi, get a number to?
Can I, can I respond?
Sure.
Thank you. What I made very clear at our last commission meeting is that the lighting situation is the next item that will be addressed. And that the new earmark that we would get would address that lighting. Now, if we get money from the state before that, based on the conversation that you had with Representative Donato, then that lighting would be fast-tracked even faster. So that lighting is something that I know about. The cost estimate was $63,000. Since then, we've also found some other areas where we need to improve this type of lighting. So the cost would actually be higher. I was going after a cultural grant for that and found out two weeks ago that we got denied funding for this project.
Mr. Riggi, I appreciate all the hard work. I know it's very difficult to do what you're doing as a one-person army. So I would still recommend moving forward. It wouldn't hurt to start the process for possibly $100,000 CPA funding to support the historical site of Chevalier. Because I think it's a public safety issue right now. If we're saying that people are suing us right now.
Yes, this is the third lawsuit.
Yeah, we're losing money more than we're bringing in, so.
They're not, they're not suing us. They're suing our partner, Blumenright Productions.
But my question, nobody seemed to know, and there was an attorney there, Lenny Gliana. It, he's going to look into it. But hopefully, it appears as though the city will not have to be responsible for this. Bill Blumenright Productions will be. But nevertheless, it's a concern. We don't want it some, it was some elderly woman that fell and it fractured her ankle or something. We don't need to have these type of accidents. The other thing is, I still sometimes am amazed that the Chevalier Theater, under Blue Blumenwright's production, is the economic engine for the city of Medford. I can't tell you how many times the businesses, the restaurants, we only have four, basically, five, counting, you know, there's Takuba the Ford, now we have Mrs. Burfice, as well as Real Gusto, all right? They are thriving, all right? They, they are so happy. I mean, I get phone calls all the time. So I just feel like sometimes the city of Medford sees the Chevalier as a stepchild. So any efforts you can do would be terrific.
Great, and I still do want to ask, aside from the lighting, it seems like the lighting is on people's radar. Are there other needs that you see in terms of the facilities, things that, you know, you would like to happen in the near future? Are there other needs that you, that you see in the Chevalier?
Absolutely. But I made a motion at the meeting at the commission to make this the number one priority. So I don't want to speak out of turn without getting there. I mean, we have a laundry list, Anna. So I don't want to speak without, I mean, we're a team.
Sure, I apologize. I thought that was what this meeting was about.
Well, it is, because we're addressing the, you know, the LED lighting. So, and that's what we need the money for. So that's correct, as opposed to why I'm here, correct?
So it sounds like there is a motion on the floor. Could you maybe repeat? Did you catch that motion, Mr. Cook? Thank you.
Counselor Scarpelli moved to ask if someone from the city can assist us in writing a proposal or request to the CPA. And then you trailed off for a second, so I'm guessing it's for funding?
For lighting updates for the balcony and other needs that would serve for public safety purposes.
Okay.
If you have, I think it's not $23 million for cash, I might be remembering, so if we could add that to the motion as well, or look into possible free cash.
For any emergency lighting.
Hang on.
Correct, sorry. You used to be a lot quicker, Adam.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I had to, I had to go back and edit the original motion. Hang on, let me read back. Counselor Scarpelli moved to ask if someone from the city can assist us in writing a proposal or request for the CPA, or look into free cash for funding for lighting updates for the balcony and other needs that Director Riggi brought up to be looked at immediately for public safety purposes.
Do we have second? Seconded by Counselor Lozaro. Shall we, is there any more discussion on this particular topic? Great, let's call the roll.
President Baer's.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Chair Callahan.
Yes. Motion's passed. Or?
Four in favor, zero opposed.
Yes, four in favor, zero opposed, and one hasn't. Yeah, I could have just said them all. Great. Is there anything further that you want to discuss about the state of Chevalier?
Terrific, I think if you help, and if, George, as you said, Counselor, excuse me, State Rep Paul Donato was going to do the five-year, you know.
I'll follow up with him in the morning as well.
Okay.
Maybe I'll follow up with Mr. Dickinson as well, Mr. Riggi, just to make sure we're all on the same page that.
You have my number, don't you?
I do, I'll call you. I'll let you know. And then, and I think that if, you know, I want to be present also at the meeting, so I know I missed the last couple. But it's important that we get more involved because we all believe that what you said, it's the engine that keeps Medford Square going right now. Without the Chevalier right now, I would hate to see where Medford Square is. So, and we should be championing it a lot more. And like I said, the refurbishing, redevelopment of Medford Square, has anyone talked to the Chevalier about what the plans are and how they're going to incorporate the Chevalier with that process? Has the city talked to the commission at all?
Andrew Mather was on the RFP committee.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Baer, Counselor President.
What was it, who's on the RFP committee?
Mr. Mather, I believe you said.
Andrew Mather, yeah.
Yeah, Andrew does a great job. And he, Bill Blumenwright has a great team.
Yep. That's perfect. I didn't, I didn't realize that. So it's good to see that there's someone that's actively working to make sure that, you know, the Chevalier is a focal point of the redevelopment. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Great. By Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Counselor Lozaro. Cook, please call the roll. When you're ready.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming.
As I say, the time is the most precious gift that we have. So thank you.
Of course.
President Baer's.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Chair Callahan.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.